Good afternoon, everyone. Today is September 26, 2023. This is a City of Prescott City Council Voting Meeting. I welcome you all. It's nice to see a semi-packed house. Do we have any introductions or announcements, Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. We actually have both. So I want to recognize former Senator, State Senator Steve Pierce, as well as Board Member for Central Yavapai Hospital District Lauren Newington out in the audience. Thank you for being here. Announcements. The city is pleased to report that we have had over 1,000 citizens complete the survey regarding State Route 89 project for widening. Thanks to everyone who has taken the time to complete the survey and share your input. The survey is open from, it has been open for a while now, but is going to stay open until November 12th, and our goal is 2,000. I told Tim Sherwood I didn't think that would happen, and he's halfway to being right. So if you have time, please take the time to fill out that survey. You can do so either online at SR89improvements.com, or you can do so in person on Wednesday, October 4th, from 4:30 to 6:30. The city will be hosting an open house at the Adult Center on Prescott, and that is located at 1280 East Rossar Street. You can also sign up for future newsletter updates through the email that is set up to request so, Last week, I had the privilege to speak to a group of citizens at the Adult Center on Rossar Road, and I've reviewed some city updates and answered their questions. I have two more presentations like this scheduled. The first is Tuesday at 3:00 PM, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, October 3, 2023, at the college, Prescott College in the Crossroads Common Conference Room. And the second one will be at Yavapai College on the 17th at 3:00 to 5:00, from 3:00 to 5:00. And that, Yavapai College is located at 1100 East Sheldon Street, Prescott. I hope to see you there. Additionally, I will be at the Farmer's Market on October 7th, from 7:30 to noon. And we did have a late arriving introduction, Mr. Mayor. I think I saw Ted Gambogi, who is Councilman-elect, out there. Oh, there you are, Ted. Stand up and be acknowledged and hazed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. We'll now have invocation from Pastor Dan Hurlbert at the Prescott United Methodist Church, followed by a pledge of allegiance from Councilman Moore.
Not sure about the Phillies, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure. Yeah. Thank you for the invitation to pray, Mr. Mayor, members of council staff. Let us pray together. Gracious and loving God, we thank you for the beauty of this day. We are especially aware of those who are doing preventative work of fire mitigation in the forests, and we pray for their safety and the fruitfulness of their labors. We thank you that you have passed on to us and continue to pass to us wisdom of the ages through the written word. We thank you for the ability to read and for the freedom of the press to read and to print what we choose. Today, we give you thanks for human resource workers, for custodians and engineers who all keep us safe in varying ways. We pray for our council. Be with them and guide them in their thoughts and actions that all they do may be for your glory. Give us confidence that you have begun a good work in us and will complete it. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes, ma'am.
All are present.
Very good. Now, we'll start off with a presentation from the Friends of the Jersey Lily Saloon for the annual courthouse lighting fundraiser. Josh Markhor, welcome.
How's everybody today? Good. That's a nice council chamber you got here. My first time down here. I'm down here representing the Friends of Jersey Lily Saloon today. As most of you probably already know, we support the annual courthouse lighting. Last year, we raised just over $64,000 to help make that happen. We are already back at it this year. We've raised over $4,000 thus far, and starting October 1st is our real kind of go time, hit the ground running. So we're selling, we're going to do our three parts that we always do, our raffle ticket sales, our silent auction, and then our live auction. Our raffle ticket sales, you can already purchase online at thefriendsofjls.com. And then in person, we'll start selling the raffle tickets October 1st down at the bar. Also, on October 1st, we'll go ahead and start hanging those donor bulbs that everybody comes to slowly love, and the patrons get to sit there and see who's supporting the community, whether they're businessmen, council members, or individuals. Our silent auction will take place online only this year. The bidding for that will open up on October 30th at 5:00 PM. You can find the link again at thefriendsofjls.com. That'll run for seven days and end on Monday, November 6. Our live auction, which helps raise about almost half of what we do, and that's going to take place, pre-bidding will actually open up online about 24 hours in advance, so on November 1st. And then the actual event will take place on November 2nd, starting at 4:00 PM, and the bidding will start at 6:00. Gary Denny from El Charo Norte is going to go ahead and provide food for everybody that night, and all that will take place down at Jersey Lily Saloon. Would love to have all you folks down there to help support the cause. Our raffle tickets and lights-out party, when we actually draw the raffle tickets, will take place on January 11th at 5:00 PM. With that, we hope to raise 70,000 this year, so we'll see how that happens. And, you know, we're accepting auction item donations up until October 19th. If any of you have businesses or anything of that sort, we'd love to get gift certificates or items that we can auction off. Today, if you would like, I can collect some funds, checks, or cash for raffle tickets. So I'll come grab those from you. I'll know who's donating what, and then I'll make some bulbs and raffle tickets for you guys and get you receipts for the tax donation. So our tax write-off.
Well, thank you, Josh. I know this is always an exciting time of the year for the big kickoff. So even though we have some small bills up here, I do have a check for $200. Thank you very much.
You outdid us, Mayor.
You kind of snuck one in there, Mayor.
I matched you, Phil.
I want to see more than one Benjamin Franklin up there, okay?
I'm coming back. I want to make sure I write down who's doing what so I don't screw up receipts for you. I can remember a lot, but once you start throwing that much money, I'm going to have an issue.
Maybe you should take a basket and walk up and down the aisles.
Perfect. So Steve asked how much we raised last year. Last year, we raised, it was like $64,032, I think, to the penny. So 70,000 is the goal this year. This is huge. I really appreciate it, and we'll see where we can go from here. Like I say, if any of you have businesses or anything like that that you would like to donate gift certificates or items from, you can get ahold of me down at Jersey Lily Saloon, and I'd be happy to arrange getting those picked up for me, guys. So thank you all, and I will get some raffle tickets and bulbs made up for you guys.
So Josh, you going to keep us up on how much you've got?
Yeah, so we'll do, I try to keep up with it. But like I say, right now, we were at about 4,000 with what you folks just donated. We're 700 more, so we're just shy of 5,000, I would say. We're going to be down on the Courthouse Square at Fall Fest, selling raffle tickets as well. If it's a warm weekend, then we sell water bottles, and so that, we end up raising about 1,000 to 2,000 at those events. So hopefully, we'll go into our big event, you know, closer to 10 grand and kind of go from there. So it's been huge, and I mean, honestly, we can't do it without the community support that we get. You know, it's, this Prescott's a great place to live and partake in stuff like this. So thank you all.
Yeah, thank you, Josh, and we wish you the very best of luck. I'm sure you're going to be very successful again this year, and the courthouse lighting is one of the iconic events that happens in our community every winter, and we very much look forward to it, so good luck.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we'll now do some proclamations. I'll start it off with a proclamation for Lieutenant Al Chaney's 103rd birthday party. Or actually, I'm not sure if he's going to have a party, but it'll be his birthday for sure. Well, I know we have a, well, at least we used to have a whole bunch of WWII veterans in our community. I've been a member of a Friday morning Veterans Breakfast Group for over 10 years. And when I started, when I joined there and had the privilege of joining those folks, we had nine WWII veterans present. Now we're down to one. So this is pretty remarkable that we had a birthday party for another WWII veteran about a week ago who turned 100. No, that was Jerry Welna. So the fact that Al Chaney's turning 103 is just remarkable, especially since he was in the Army Air Corps. Army guys seem to last a lot longer. Just because I happen to be an Army guy, okay? So whereas Alton Chaney, Lieutenant Army Air Corps, WWII, celebrated his 103rd birthday on September 19, 2023, and whereas having been born on September 19, 1920 in Springfield, Massachusetts, Al Chaney has been a member of the Prescott community since 1976. And whereas he obtained his pilot's license as a teenager, and whereas Alton enlisted in the Army Air Corps in 1942, serving in WWII after graduating from Yale University, and whereas Lieutenant Chaney continued his education and in his 50s earned a law degree from the John Marshall School of Law. Now, therefore, I feel good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, along with the City Council, to consider it an honor to make this recognition to Alton Chaney on his occasion of his 103rd birthday and acknowledge his military service in WWII. Congratulations and best wishes. All right, our next proclamation is a proclamation for Adult Education and Literacy Week, which is September 18 through the 23rd, and it'll be presented and read by Councilman Tenney.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my understanding, we often have representatives here for these types of things. So it's my understanding the representative who is to be here is not feeling well. We'll get this to him later. So I'll go ahead and read this. Whereas, so this is for Adult Education and Literacy Week, as Mayor Good mentioned, this week, this last week, I guess, September 18 through 23rd. Whereas, more than 51.4 million Americans can't read or write at the most basic level, while 75.1 million lack basic math skills, as well as the credentials and skills necessary to succeed in post-secondary education. And whereas 92% of jobs in the US require digital skills, and 1/3 of workers don't have the foundational digital skills necessary to enter and thrive in today's jobs. And whereas every year, 1 in 3 young adults drops out of high school. And whereas, American Action Forum estimate that in 2020 that America is short an estimated 7.5 million private sector workers across all skill levels. And whereas, adult education programs contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along the continuum in their educational journey to achieve basic skills and get prepared for a career in college. And whereas, adult education programs in community colleges and community centers offer low-cost, high-value programs that upgrade the skill of our citizens. And, last whereas here. And whereas, several Arizona cities and municipalities celebrate National Adult Education and Literacy Week as proud participants in the National Coalition on Adult Basic Education, COABE, Educate and Elevate Campaign, which helps our citizens learn all about their adult education options to attain their professional and personal goals. Now, therefore, feel good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does proclaim the week of September 18 through 22, 2023, as Adult Education and Literacy Week.
Now, on our agenda is the open call to the public. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement, and residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on the topic. And topics of a primary national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I do have one public comment card. It's from Deborah Thalassidis.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm here today to request that you perform due diligence with regards to Prescott Frontier Day's finances, given that you considered a potential resolution of litigation involving the rodeo grounds today in executive session. First, I want to talk about their 2021 tax return, which shows two outstanding notes, mortgages, or loans. One is an unsecured loan obtained in 2020. The other is a secured loan obtained in 2021. The total amount of both of these loans is $649,800. In addition, in 2021, PFD received $195,000 contribution from the Buckle Club, and this is before the Buckle Club became a 501(c)(3). If not for that contribution, instead of showing positive revenues of $57,560 for 2021, PFD would have had a net loss of $137,440. PFD's unaudited 2022 year-end balance sheet also has some questionable items. It shows $18,256 in loan interest expenses. One might conclude they have not paid off the $649,000 worth of loans. In addition, they reported numerous expenses for travel conventions and seminars totaling $39,606. That's a heck of a budget, a travel budget for a small nonprofit. And there's another $163,000 for hospitality expenses. PFD also reported a net profit from the rental of the Freeman Building, the Arena, and the Macklin Building of $148,139. Section 5B of the July 2016 agreement with the city requires PFD to deposit this money into a separate revenue account for maintenance to the property. Is this even happening? It doesn't appear from their balance sheet. There's no maintenance reserve. Finally, in 2022, PFD's unaudited balance sheet shows a year-end loss of $281,181. This operation does not make money, and it's losing money like never before. Former board members have told me they used to say a million in, a million out. Over 1/3 of their revenue comes from sponsorships. So over the past two years, PFD has lost almost $419,000 and racked up additional debt of almost $650,000. That's $1 million in two years. PFD needs more events to cover their debt. Please carefully consider the financial situation of PFD before you make any decisions on the rodeo grounds property or any other agreements. Without sound financial management, I have to ask, are the taxpayers going to be on the hook for what happens? Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Very well, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull any items from the consent agenda? Councilman Moore?
I'd like to pull item E.
Any additional items? No, then I'll entertain a motion for the remainder of the items on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through I with the exclusion of item E.
Second.
Got a motion as second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I've asked to pull this item from the agenda because it does have to do with landscaping a city property. And as a city councilman, but also as a resident of the City of Prescott, I'm personally concerned with the amount of herbicides and pesticides that are being used by our government, as well as by private citizens, where we frequently will use herbicides to kill weeds and pesticides to kill bugs. And I know that commercial landscaping companies, this is a big part of what they do when they provide landscaping services, whether it's for commercial entities like the city or for private properties. And I feel that the city has a responsibility to set an example for the residents of the city and try to minimize our use of pesticides and herbicides for treatment of weeds and insects, because if we are using it, it kind of justifies that residents can use it too, not that they need to be justified in their use of chemicals. And so I just wanted to raise this issue that maybe as a city, we can look at more environmentally friendly and responsible ways of treating weeds and insects without the use of chemicals and set the example for our citizens to follow that example.
Councilman Moore, so we work on trying to reduce amounts of chemicals that we use. We do a pretty good, a fair amount of mowing instead of spraying. There's a lot of areas in town that we do just weedy with community services or any of the work crews we can, even with our seasonal staff. And then we try to use minimal chemical in the other areas to help manage that.
And I know we've talked offline prior to this meeting, and I appreciate the time that we spent talking. And I just want to raise the issue so there's greater awareness of the hazards when you consider a community of our size between organizations like Lowe's, or Home Depot, or Walmart, or True Value. Citizens probably are literally putting thousands of gallons of pesticides and herbicides on their property, which ends up in our streams, in our lakes, and affects the quality of life here realistically.
Yes.
Well, thanks for you, thanks for your comments, Councilman Moore. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Item E.
Second. We have a motion as second for Consent Agenda Item 9E. Please vote.
Passes 6-1.
Very well, we'll move on to the liquor license applications.
Thank you, Mayor. Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 6 bar liquor license application from Lenell Joseph Gallegos, applicant for the Senator, location 114 South Montezuma Street, Suite B. The application fees have been paid, and the signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Is the applicant present? Come on up and tell us about your new location. We've been discussing it here on the day as trying to figure out where the heck this is.
Good afternoon. This is located in the palace.
Sir, if you could please pull the microphone up so that the audience at home can hear you, that'd be great. Thanks.
This is located in the palace. It's located in the rear section of the basement. I'm sorry. It is located in the basement of the palace. It's in the rear section of the basement in a section that hasn't been used for quite a few years.
Yeah, I know. I'd spent a lot of time in the palace in different parts of the main room, in the back room, and upstairs in the old entertainment rooms. But I didn't know about the basement room. So it's interesting to find out that there's an additional location for adult beverages and meetings. So any other questions or concerns from the council? No, we wish you luck there. Councilmember Rusing.
I was just curious, how is this facility going to be accessed? From the outside, from the street, or from the inside?
From the outside. There's direct access from the alley in the rear.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Councilman Tenney?
Thank you, Mayor. So I noticed the name of the establishment is the Senator. I see the Senator showing a lot of interest in this. Is there some connection there that we should know about?
There might be a little inspiration coming from somewhere like that.
Fantastic, fantastic. Well, we appreciate the great service and work and representation he's provided for our area. So in as far as there's a connection there, that increases my support.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
We always want to make sure Whiskey Row maintains its legitimacy.
And history.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion as second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license number 254674 for a new Series 6 bar liquor license application for the Senator, location 114 South Montezuma Street, Suite B.
Second. Motion as second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Very good. Good luck with that, and I guess Suite B means basement, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to a liquor license application, 10B.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application from Jerry Craig Miller, applicant for the Dinner Bell and Casa Alvarez, location 321 West Gurley Street. The application fees have been paid, and the sign has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Is the applicant present? Well, I know I've been a pretty regular patron of Casa Alvarez and the Dinner Bell going back for a long time. So I have met the new owners, and they've assured me they're going to keep the same menu and keep it the great and historic place that it's always been. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion as second, please vote.
Councilman Tenney?
All right, I think we need another one here.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license number 254991 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application for the Dinner Bell and Casa Alvarez, location 321 West Gurley Street.
Second. Motion as second, please vote. Very good, we'll move on to the regular agenda, item 11A.
Adoption of ordinance number 2023-1840, amending chapter 1-4 of the Prescott City Code and ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title 1, Chapter 1-4 Code Enforcement, Sections 1-14-3 Code Enforcement Officer, 1-14-5 citations Authority of Code Enforcement Officers, 1-14-8 Appearance, Payment by Mail, and 1-14-9 Default Payment Collection of Judgments and adding a severance provision.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And I should thank Chelsea Walton for preparing this presentation. She was going to prepare, but was dealing with some sickness. And so as we try and figure out this PowerPoint here, this is basically a housekeeping item. If you recall, we had passed a hearing officer ordinance. We then had to wait for it to be part of the budget. It was budgeted for the hearing officer, hiring the hearing officer. And as we've gone out and started to look for a hearing officer to hire to start the process, we found some inconsistencies with some other older, different ordinances. And so we just wanted to update to make it consistent. So these show the two main changes. The first change is that the code enforcement officer's position within this older ordinance was under the chief of police, and that's not how we have it currently functioning. So it's cleaning that up and putting it under the community development department like we currently have in practice. And the second issue is in this older ordinance, any infraction had to go through the city court, short-circuiting the hearing officer process. So it's just adding in language that would allow it to go through the hearing officer process or through city court. So those are the changes. I can, I'll go through them briefly. So 114-3, this is what adds the language, as I mentioned, that puts the code enforcement officers under the community development director, the designee of the community development director. And then throughout, we have this change as to the hearing officer or city court. And that's what you see here in 114-5, adding the possible addition or the addition of the hearing officer. And so it can, we can choose whether it goes through the hearing officer process or the city court, rather than being forced only go through the city court. And that same change is consistent. We had to go through a few different ordinances to make that change. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention. And we, I can answer any questions, but I think it's mainly housekeeping and ask that you adopt this ordinance.
Thank you, Joe. I know there were a number of people that approached me and wanted to find out how some of the city ordinances we'd had, we have been discussing hadn't yet been voted in. And I was telling them that some of these basic kind of housekeeping issues had to be completed first so that our code compliance and code enforcement officers would be prepared to actually go out and start enforcing these ordinances and codes. And then also being able to clarify the hearing officer position and the jurisdiction between the hearing officer and the, and the city judge. So I think that was a necessary change in having code compliance and code enforcement under community development obviously was a very good move since I just got a report that some of the violations of our sign code that had been so rampant have dramatically improved just in the last few days. So I know whenever I drive into work and come down Iron Springs and some of the other areas around the city, I just see example after example of sign code violations. And I would encourage anybody who has concerns about that to make a little trip around the downtown business core. I think you're going to see that it's improved dramatically. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion with this.
Thank you. I have, I have a question for our city attorney. I was under the impression that the code enforcement hearing officer position was going to be under the legal department. Was, is there a change?
This doesn't change that, but I will say that the hearing officer is under direction of both the city attorney's office and community development. So we drafted the information and the job recruitment information, but it's actually someone that'll be hired by community development department. But this change only impacts the code enforcement and then allows us to use the hearing officer. It doesn't change where that management is.
Okay. And then also, some of the hearings may take place in council chambers in order to expedite the process so that we're not tying up the city courts?
Yes, so all of the hearing officer hearings will actually not be in the city court. We still have the option with these changes to go through city court if it makes sense to do so, but would prefer in most cases to go through hearing officer process. It's faster and more efficient. And all of those would be done on city property rather than in the courthouse.
And also, I have one last question. Is there going to be some sort of a notification process if there is a hearing where the complaining neighbors will be able to come in and make comments?
I don't know that we have that process set up, but I think as a matter of course, they would be witnesses to a violation and it would make sense that they would be part of that.
All righty, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Any public input?
No, Mayor.
Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to, I recommend to move to adopt ordinance number 2023-1840.
Second.
Motion as second, please vote. We will now move on to item 11B.
Thank you, Mayor. This final item on the agenda is for the approval of two contracts to facilitate the construction of lighted basketball courts at Willow Creek Park. And we have deputy recreation services director, Tim Legler, is here to provide the project overview and answer any questions.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Thanks, Katie. So we went through, we've been talking about basketball courts for years. And as you guys know, the cost of everything keeps going up. So we've been trying to get this budgeted. We had a budget last year, but the budget was a lot lower. So we increased the capital fund. We worked with Kim Lee Horn for the plans and we, we talked about the courts. Yes, we can build the courts and then they can't be used at night. So we looked at this project, says let's do it right, let's do it right so that we can do city league, we can do tournaments, the public can play. Currently, we have no public basketball courts available outdoors to the public. Our 2007 master plan stated that the minimum number of basketball courts needed by the year 2020 was seven. It also laid out places to put those. Pioneer Park was one of them and then a couple neighborhood places also to add them. Pioneer Park, as you guys know, we've got pickleball out there. It's a pretty busy place. With the Ramada that was at Willow Creek Park that aged out and had a lot of issues that came down, that became the place to put the basketball courts. Two full-size courts fits in there pretty nicely. We did do a survey, I think it was in the spring, based on the size of the courts. Should we do NBA regulation size or should we just do the full size? And survey came back, majority of people saying they don't want to run NBA standards because it's a lot of running. So we opted to do this. The contract, I do want to state that the contracts in there, we budgeted $250,000 in the budget. We came, so with these two contracts, it comes up at 126,700 over. We can sustain that within our budget. We had budgeted 200,000 for pavement preservation that we have no plans of doing currently. We're working with Public Works for that stuff. We're going to, with finance, use some of that money to cover the total cost of this project. So with that, I'll answer any questions you guys have.
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. You know, I, I support our Parks and Recs Department 100%, but I have a lot of major concerns about this expenditure. It's a total of $377,000. And I'm wondering if, is this a want or a need? In the packet, there wasn't any maps or site plans as to where these courts are going to be located. I thought maybe there was going to be one court in one spot. I have no idea where these two neighborhood parks are. And we really have many other needs, for example sidewalks. I don't remember one constituent complaining that we don't have enough outdoor basketball So I don't know, I'm, I really don't. Can you convince me as to how critical this is versus maybe some sidewalks in our town?
Two completely different funds on that, but let me answer this. This is based on our 2007 master plan of Parks and Recreation. That's what outlines what the plan is for recreation. Having no basketball courts within the city, that's been, we get that complaint quite a bit from the public, calling us, asking us, where are outdoor courts? Well, we don't have any. What do you mean you don't have any? We get a lot of those calls. Is it a want or a need? It's a need to give the public, the citizens of the community, recreation within their community. There's a lot of basketball play goes on, a lot of league plays occur. So I didn't put any plans or any of that in here, but it's Willow Creek Park next to the Beneful Dog Park. It's where the Ramada used to sit up there.
I would also just mention real quickly that, you know, as far as sidewalks, we have, we have other funding and other, you know, projects in place for that and we have annual sidewalk funding to do things. So we are continuously trying to update through Public Works some of our sidewalks and certainly, you know, can't do everything all at once, but have a more of a program for that. This is more of a community amenity based on a master, an approved master plan. And at this point, we just don't have any of these facilities. This is an opportunity for us to put that facility in. It's been in our capital program and has been approved through the, through the budget process as a project that the council was in favor of. So that's why we're bringing it back for this.
Thank you.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, I'm totally in favor of it. I just had a question and I'm kind of putting you and Councilman Tenny on the spot. I know that there are a lot of times when we share recreation facilities within the city, like Y-ball will use variety gyms, might be a high school gym or a middle school gym or the girls' gym and YMCA. We just share a lot of facilities. And I know that the high school has had outdoor basketball courts for several years that aren't lighted and they've kind of been converted into pickleball courts fairly recently. I don't know if all of them have, but I was just wondering if that's an additional resource where we could partner together with the school district and maybe put some lights on that court so we can get to our seven basketball outdoor courts. I'm just seeing how we can expand what you're proposing since the goal was to have seven and this is only going to give us two. Just, just a thought of throwing out.
Thank you, Councilman Moore. I would say that I don't know if seven is accurate on that whole of a plan. I know we've talked to the school before, grave concern with the school opening up to the public is of course, security. They, at one point, were open to the public when they were down below the baseball fields. They've converted those, if I remember correctly.
So we, the courts that Councilman Moore is referring to are concrete courts at the high school and they're, they're up in the north parking lot area. Yeah, if the city wanted to come to us and say, hey, we'd love to put some lights in there, et cetera, I'd be open to that. There's some neighbors real close nearby who might have different feelings about that, but I would absolutely be open to that conversation. You're right, you addressed something Councilmember Rusing mentioned. She hasn't talked with anybody who expresses this need. I regularly talk with people who express the need for basketball courts particularly, but also more recreation amenities that are geared toward young people and families. We do a great job of, of recreation amenities that all ages can use and those that are geared toward older folks. And that makes sense, we have a lot of older folks, but we need to keep this a really family-friendly place as well. And this is a big part of that, I think, and really appreciate your efforts as far as that's concerned. To your question, Councilman Moore, would we be willing to partner with the city on additional things? Absolutely, is the answer.
Councilwoman Kent, tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have questions on the basketball courts also. I noticed in the scope that you're having a fence. Is that fence going to be monitored and locked? And who, if so, who's going to open that?
You mean outside of ours? Is, are we going to lock it? We don't typically, we, the fence is really to keep the ball in place, so it's not, they're not chasing down the hillside. Or because of the surface of it, if we have inclement weather, we, like pickleball, we lock the gates to keep people out of there. It's not something we lock every night or unlock every morning.
Yeah, I was just worried about vandalism and, in fact, have you guys, did you come up with a cost analysis of the maintenance of that thing?
I have not. The maintenance is very similar to the pickleball courts where it's every five years, they do a new coat on the surface because it's a painted surface.
Yeah. So if it becomes a problem, is there a way to secure it?
Yes, yes. So if it becomes a problem, thank you for that, then we would start locking the gates and restricting the hours. We work closely with the police department in all of our parks. If we start noticing trends or having problems, they, they do extra patrols in there with park hours posted. Anybody in there after those hours, the police, that gives them the authority to contact that person just to find out what they're doing.
Yeah, I was, I was just concerned. We, I've had properties and HOAs before and we've had, it's just the, the cost of keeping the vandalism, the noise ordinance compliance, that kind of thing. It just ended up being such a trouble in some of these HOAs. I was just worried that we were going to end up inheriting that here. But if you're open and willing, if it does become a problem, to be able to lock it during, you know, hours, because it will have an end, I mean, it'll be done at 10.
Correct.
People will have to vacate at 10?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing, I think you're up again.
I just have one question as to the location. It seems to me if, if you were going to have a basketball court more centrally located might be a better idea, like at Granite Creek Park. I don't know if that site was looked at or not.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rusing. That was the reason I came up here to address that, the location part. We looked at the courts over the, over a number of years, the best location. Granite Creek Park, for a lot of reasons, wasn't the best place to put it. We really feel like this area in Willow Creek is the best place to put it. It's not surrounded by residential neighbors, for one thing. Number two, with the growth in North Prescott, it becomes more centralized as time goes on. So really, one of the obstacles we had to pushing the project forward in previous years was where are we going to locate it that's going to be, that's going to work for everybody? So the location's a big part of this, too.
Thank you.
Well, I will make a comment. I mean, to justify a significant capital budget based upon a master plan that's 16 years old, I think is a little bit difficult for me to support. I think we do need a couple of outdoor lighted basketball courts. But whether we need seven, I think is probably something that needs to be reevaluated. When we have a basketball courts in different communities being converted to pickleball, it just tells you that there's more interest in pickleball than there is in outdoor basketball courts. I know there's a lot of basketball being used at the Grace Park Center indoors. So I think having a limited number of basketball courts is probably a good thing. I think the location there on Willow Creek Road is also a good location. You've got the dog park right next to it. So there's activity going on throughout the course of the day, and I think it would probably reduce the risk of vandalism and other kinds of concerns that sometimes we have to be aware of when we have outdoor recreational facilities. 10 years ago, when I first was introduced to the whole concept of pickleball and I was playing it at Willow Hills Baptist Church, it was kind of a eye-opening experience for me. So when the first courts opened up in Pioneer Park, they were primarily funded by private donations. And after that concept was proven to be extremely popular, then we went ahead and expanded it with publicly paid-for additional courts. And I think they're wildly popular with, with tournaments and other things happening there. But when we have some of the older basketball courts, like the ones at the high school being converted over to pickleball, I think I just can't see that a 16-year-old master plan should still justify that many new pickleball court, I mean, new basketball courts coming out of our general plan funds. So I personally think this is a good idea for these two, but maybe a survey of trying to establish how much legitimate interest in more basketball courts today really needs to be reestablished.
Mayor, if I may, real quick, I would agree with your statement that a master plan update really does need to be done. And this would be one area that I think if council would like us to move down that route, this would be a great item for us to discuss as part of our council goals for the next two years, is to start planning for and getting a new master plan update for the recreation services. And then we can really understand what the needs are and kind of do a new needs assessment.
Well, I know, I think there's a lot of interest in trying to make the city more attractive to families and younger residents, and I think an outdoor basketball court kind of fits in there. Some of the people that play pickleball, I don't think are going to be making, playing full-court basketball, that's for sure. So being able to have a balance, but something that's based upon really more current interest, I think is something that we have to kind of look at and determine whether it's valid, and then plan for it in our annual budget discussions. Councilman Tenney, do you have an additional comment?
Yeah, just really quickly, I want to piggyback on what you said, Mayor. I appreciate that. We're looking at a master plan for recreation that's many years old. If we needed, if the thought was that we needed seven in 2016, if anything, we may need more now, but that's certainly something we can look into. At minimum, we absolutely need these two. I'm really surprised that the discussion about this has gone on as long as it has, but I'm glad that we're bringing these issues to light, and we can look more at what's really needed going forward. So thanks again.
All right, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right, if there's no further discussion or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve City Contract Number 2024-084.
Second.
Motion as second, please vote.
Passes 5-2.
And, Mayor, if I might, I move that we approve to, or excuse me, that we approve City Contract Number 2024-083.
Second.
Motion as second, please vote.
Passes 5-2.
Very good. I believe we're concluded in our issues today. So for this council meeting, I'll end it with a quote from one of my ancestors' next-door neighbors, Thomas Jefferson. "The God who gave us life gave us liberty. Can the liberties of a nation be secure when we have removed a conviction that these liberties are the gift of God?" That was a quote over 200 years ago, and we're trying to answer that question today. So let's keep that in mind as we move forward with the defense of our constitutional republic. This meeting is adjourned.